Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us at the May 21st regular meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of emergency and join me and rise as we salute the Stars and Stripes.
(inaudible)
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Whitman and Healy. The applicants are seeking a lot line alteration. Make it a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about this application? Any comments from the consultants? Any comments from the board?
I called Duchess E-911 and left a message and I did not receive a response.
Thank you.
It's bad when you call 911 and you don't, your message is...
Well, for the record, I did not dial 911.
Oh, okay.
It's the administrative office of 911. This was merely in response to my question as to whether or not you'd need a new address change. You still have a stub sort of driveway in the front, your main one, and if 9/11 gets in touch with you, you'll know that, what it's about. Any other comments from the board?
No.
There being no public testimony, no further comment. May I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone has this file?
I do. Resolution accepting sketch and granting final conditional subdivisional approval. Resolution number 13-46A, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby accepts the sketch plan and classifies the subdivision as a minor subdivision.
Shows up the vote.
Be it further resolved, the planning board hereby grants final approval to the subdivision plat entitled "Map showing revision prepared for Catherine and Michael Whitman and Richard V. and Dolores H. Healy, prepared by Michael F. Bieder Jr., LSP LLC dated October 8, 2013, last revised April 28, 2014, and authorizes the chair or his designated to sign the subdivision plat after compliance with the following conditions: One, payment of all fees and escrow; Two, Department of Health permission to file; Three, approval by the planning board attorney of a deed from Healy to Whitman for the .118 acre to the conveyed, to be conveyed and emerger deed from Whitman to Whitman to combine the .118 acre parcel with .491 acre parcel. Be it further resolved that no building permit shall be issued for any improvement on the lands of Whitman unless proof of recordation of the approved deeds with Duchess County Clerk has been provided to the zoning administrator."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. I know that sounded strange to convey Whitman to Whitman, but you're essentially buying first a small subdivided piece, then you've got to recombine it with the county. That's all that it is. And Victoria, Ms. Pollardor, I'll be happy to help you in any way she can, I know. Right?
You guys planned that even away from the microphone?
No, we did not. You were welcome to come up, but I didn't think there was much to add because it was a fairly simple application. So, thank you for your forbearance, your patience and everything, and good luck in every aspect of your business and personal life there. Okay?
Bye.
Next item on the agenda is setting a public hearing for an extension of site plan approval for Jeffrey Grove Estates. Mr. Kaufman, you're here.
I am here. Good evening, everybody.
Welcome. Please, can you raise the microphone a bit and speak into it?
Hi, I'm Louis Kaufman. I'm here for the applicant.
Do you have anything to add from what I said?
No.
Your letter was persuasive, and all we need to do is set a public hearing for the extension request for June 4th. Make it a motion to do so?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm sorry, you didn't have to come in.
Well, that's okay.
You would've missed this.
I always love these minor little positive turns. Let me know if it's going to be bad. I won't show up.
The next item on the agenda is a lot line revision proposed for Maltz located at 92 Honeywell Lane. The applicants are here. It appears that what you're doing is separating the commercial use from a residential use. It's on the same lot?
Yes.
And you're, it looks like you're combining a few smaller lots that have structures on them right now into the commercial lots, so everything's kind of cleaned and neatened up?
It's exactly what we're doing, trying to clean it up.
First, since I leapt right in there, let me ask you to state your name for the record. Sorry.
Sure. My name is Patricia Maltz and Charles Maltz, her husband.
Thank you. Is there anything you want to add to what I just said?
No.
Okay, let me start it over to our consultants then. Ms. Axelsson?
Most of my comments have to do with adding some clarification to the map, you know, labeling uses, adding a zoning table, adding a little table, and I've written them all down and all...
You have great...
Yeah. It's only half a page of comments, so hopefully it won't be too difficult to deal with. Labeling the open space areas as areas rather than parcels, noting that there's a current special permit, things like that, and showing a 50-foot setback along the proposed scrapyard lot.
Okay.
It'll run just along two sides, and based on a review of an aerial, it looks like there's already vegetation in that area, so...
These are all things that your survey could just add to the...
Sure.
It's, basically as you said, a zoning table. The open space parcels are not shown as a separate parcel, but language on the site plan, or on the subdivision plat indicates it calls it a parcel. You don't want to make it a parcel.
Right.
You just want to do a deed restriction, I know. Okay, that's what I thought.
And actually, if you could give me his email address, I could email him the comments.
That would be Mr. Hall?
Yes.
If you have his email, you can just provide it to Ms. Axelsson and she'll...
I don't have it right now, but I can get it to you tomorrow. No?
Okay.
No?
I'll have, I'll have you call my secretary.
You can email it to me. How's that?
Okay, that sounds good.
Then you can forward it on, because it's just technical stuff. It's fairly small.
Yeah.
Anything else?
He told us there probably would be a few things like that. He tried to cover everything, but can't cover all the...
Actually, I met with him. He's from Stanfordville. He's a nice guy. It was our first time to do business with him before. He was pretty thorough. He'd read most of the code. I was very impressed. So, you chose well, in my opinion. Anything else, Ms. Axelsson?
That's it.
Ms. Pollardor, any comments?
I don't know if Lady's comments address the 50-foot buffer requirement. I think that was something they were going to ask to be shown on the plan. In between a residential lot and the scrapyard, they asked for a 50-foot buffer on the new line.
Okay. I think it exists. We just probably have to identify.
It just needs to be shown on there. And you, can you show them where you think it needs to be placed?
I know, I, in my comments, I had said that it should go...
Did you start?
On parcel two, I guess it would be along the westerly and southerly new line.
Okay.
And, you know, again, what I was saying before is that based on the aerials, it looks like there's already wood in the area, and it looks like there's a hedge on the southern line, so...
These are just...
I don't have it in my face.
These are required under Article 25, which deals with scrapyards, and this is actually, I believe, this board's first time to deal with a scrapyard changed to any kind, so we had to go through and look through the file, and I didn't even see that was in there myself. So, he may have missed it because it wasn't part of the rego subdivision requirement. Anything else?
That's it, really. Everything else is clarification about the, you know, changes in lot, a table that shows there are three lots, this much acreage, two lots will result, et cetera.
Anything else, Ms. Pollardor?
No, I think this covered all of my comments.
Okay. Start to my far left, Mr. Signe, any comments?
I see there's a seeker form. Short form was done. We have to complete the second part of that.
We do that, yes. Applicants don't do that in Hyde Park.
Would it in site visit be appropriate?
I think so, and you're missing a microphone for the moment.
I'm sorry.
Would you mind if we were allowed just to walk on the site to see?
Sure. This way.
Should we just call you in advance? We'll email around. Do you, do you use email?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Does Ms., our secretary...
I work for IBM, so I have to use it.
Oh, please, okay. Yes. Do you, is it okay if we email around some dates with the board? It may not be the full board that wants to walk, just a few of us, and we'll have the CAC, just to see. We've done the Google Earth, so we looked down, and I'm familiar with the area from driving through it before.
We've had Hyde Park, Town Board, Zoning Board, all kinds of board members that are on our property before.
Good, good.
And the DEC comes twice a year, so...
Right, to inspect, we know and to verify, so...
No problem.
Yeah, yeah. So, what I'll do is email around some dates for a site walk, and I'll include CAC members.
Right.
Any other comments? Mr. Murphy?
No comments.
Mr. Groninger?
No comment.
Ms. Dexter?
Nothing additional.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
And what I'd suggest we do is put this on the agenda for June 4th to type the action and do, let's see, there are no referrals, are there?
No, because it's an existing house with an existing curb cut.
There's nothing new being added, no new proposed structure?
You could do it as unlisted, uncoordinated.
Unlisted, uncoordinated. County planning does not like to, they don't see these. It's on a town road anyway. No new driveways proposed. In essence, nothing's proposed except for a little artificial line for you to separate.
Because, you know, the thing is, the yard was grandfathered in, and we've been wanting to clean that line up for a long time, but we couldn't afford the surveyor until now, so...
I understand. I was just talking to the CAC. Surveys are expensive.
Very.
I've had to use a couple myself, I know. So, we'll put this on the agenda to type and declare that... Type the action.
We could do seeker if, if after your site walk, there are no issues that you're concerned about. We can put it on June 4th for...
Conclude seeker as well, and then set a public hearing for the following two weeks. And then, since this is a, in essence, a minor lot subdivision, what we would do is accept for sketch and possibly for final at the same time?
Right, assuming you would want the changes before the public hearing is set. So, I don't know how quickly the surveyor can turn it around.
Oh, this is right. It's, they're pretty minor changes. If he's got them on his computer. How many plans would everyone, would, the changes are fairly minor. Would people, would everyone accept for us short copies or half-size copies?
Absolutely.
And then three full size?
Absolutely.
The only important thing we would be seeing is that 25 or 50-foot buffer around the edge. So, I think, so, we'll, if you can...
Can I get pencil and just draw it in now?
You know what? That's actually illegal in this state because they've been stamped by a surveyor. Once it's stamped by an engineer surveyor, he has to make the changes.
Yeah.
But to save you some money, we got our, call full-size plans. We can see everything. He can run half-size, and they're usually legal-size paper or a little bit larger. It's depending on what, because...
There's three full sizes, though.
Yeah, three full sizes, in other words, what you need, and the rest would just be half sizes. And that'll reduce your cost substantially, I assure you. Yes?
Just one more thing, you know, for the record on seeker, I did look at the EAF, and then I looked up, you know, anything I could look up under mapping resources. They really, any resources that are worthy of noting are already on the plans. No changes, so I didn't have any problem with the EAF.
No, neither did I.
Certainly could be nice.
I mean, I believe, when you look at an older map, it looks like there was a wetland at one point, but I think that's been long since filled in, because this has been existing there for, how long's that been there?
1950.
Wow.
Pre-zoning, see?
Pre-zoning, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Well, that's, you know, we've had a lot of, a lot of the town people have been out over the years, and we've just slowly been trying to, you know, formalize and clean it up.
Well, Ms. Moss says that she wants a good operation, because she relies on the DEC, and she knows they're not easy to...
They are not easy, not at all.
So, if you're making it through them twice a year, then we know everything's on the up and up, on the copesthetic. So, I'll email around some dates, and we'll inform you first to make sure that those, any of those dates are okay, and you can pick one. And then if you can, do you have a sort of a, can you tell us where the line, the proposed line is by walking it?
Oh, yeah. You can, you can walk them and show them where the line is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Are you there every day? So, you could be there during the day, or, I mean, during the weekdays?
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay, those are the best days for you? Weekends, no?
Weekends, no.
Okay, then we'll try to...
If you, we have to, I...
No, 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 we'll make it easy on you. We'll just, we'll look for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
We're away, but we go away on the weekends, so...
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay. Then we'll be in touch, and we'll see you in two weeks. Assuming that you're...
Do we need a resolution to type the action, or no?
We'll have that ready in two weeks.
No, I meant the 4th.
Oh, on the 4th, yeah. Assuming that we have the new, if we have the new plans that have the small changes, the technical changes by the 4th, then we'll set the public hearing. We can type the action regardless.
We'll have it ready for the 4th.
Yeah. We'll type the action regardless. Yep.
Can you clarify what seeker is?
Oh, State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Oh.
It's the form that you fill out called the Environmental Assessment Form, and when you have people who've been doing this a while, we also are saying seeker instead of State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Okay.
And it's a series of questions that just say, are any of the proposed actions likely to create negative impacts, also positive impacts to the economic, the natural, and the historic resource environment? And quite frankly, since you've been in operations since 1950, I don't think there's a lot of resources over there that haven't been, they're fully utilized right now, put it that way. It's primarily for sites that are, often for sites that are empty. There's no structure on it whatsoever, so we go and evaluate what the impacts to wetlands would be, endangered, threatened, and rare species. As I said, there's also positive impacts that we're required to weigh, including would there be more jobs, would it expand the tax base, would there be, you know, positive impacts to the local economy, our local environment as well. So, it's one of the balancing acts that we do up here.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No.
It's nice to meet you. We'll see you before, I hope, in two weeks through the site walk. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for the Fullums who live at 3 Calmer Place. They were not here tonight because I didn't think there was any need for them to be. We, it's really, they're in the statewide areas significance, but 3 Calmer Place is very close to Route 9. It's not visible from the FDR Presidential Site, nor the Vanderbilt Estate, nor from the river, which is why the SAS was created. So, any questions about this I can answer, if I need to? They're literally just changing the steps up the front.
This is embarrassing that they have to come in front of us.
Well, they don't even have to come. That's why I tell them not to. I talked to Ms. Moss about her taking these on and just saying waive it. What she would prefer to do is for the Town Board to create a map of the SAS, so that we could take a look based on where sites are, what would be visible from the river or one of the two estates, which actually does make sense, but we just haven't gotten around to doing that yet on the Town Board. Because we, once we adopt that, then...
We can eliminate 80% of them.
We eliminate 80% of them that way. And that is, it's, the problem is just take, you'd have to figure out the vantage point from the river as to what it all is seeing, because the ridge line varies into this neighborhood, I know. Like, my house isn't really visible, but my pool house is, but I see more of the river from my house. It's just the way the tree canopy shades, et cetera, so. And if you think about visibility when leaf off, it's, there's a lot more that's visible. So, we'll work on it at some point. I'm confident. Who has this file?
I do.
Thank you. Oh. Ms. Dexter gave Mr. Oliver both files tonight.
I gave him reading, reading duty tonight.
Site plan waiver, Town Code Section 108-9.4(c)(2), Resolution Number 14-17, whereas an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Jason and Heather Fulham on May 5th, 2014, for property located at 3 Calmer Place in the Town of Hyde Park. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file entitled Fulham regarding a specific request as received May 5th, 2014, and in the building permit application filed for this project.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good luck to the Fullums. Getting a building permit now. And the next item on the agenda is a new application for a site plan amendment for Stewart Shop, number 313, located to the south, 3648 Albany Post Road. Can you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Chad Fowler. We're for Stewart Shops in Saratoga Springs, New York.
And I'm going to turn the microphone over to you so you can describe all you're proposing, unless you want me to blather on about it myself.
No, I'm happy to do it. This is our site just down the road here on Route 9. We've been here since 1997 when we built the shop, and the gas tanks are due to be replaced, not condition-wise, but Stewart's policy. As they reach about 20 years of age, we like to replace them. So, we're a little overdue here. It's our own choice to replace them. They are warranted for 30 years, but we'd like to upgrade to new technology. And instead of just replacing gas tanks, we'd like to take a second look at the entire site. And we've done so, and we'd like to replace the canopy, upgrade to four dispensers. We have two now. The profile on the roof, I think, was already agreed upon for the canopy. We like to upgrade the lighting on the site. There's new technology now with LED lighting, so we can upgrade that and still have downcast lighting. Replace the landscaping. That's due to be updated as well. That's original landscaping there. And we are seeking approval for those changes. We will add some blacktop, about 1,500 square feet of, between blacktop and concrete. That would be impervious. That changes the percentage slightly of green space versus blacktop. We are proposing for water drainage off the canopy to go to a rain garden, and existing catch basins in the lot, we were proposing to add a snout or a tee to act as an oil-water separator within the catch basin. We're trying to do the snout if they fit in the catch basin. So, there's a note on the print that states if they don't fit, we have another application that we can use.
Our media, oh, good. I thought he was going to tell you weren't speaking loud enough. Our director, this is shown on television, came up for a moment. Before I go on, so if I read correctly, if I heard correctly, the plantings that you proposed, they all look like they're going to rain gardens and your landscaping. Am I right?
The rain garden is for the canopy drain, is all, just, there's a small rain garden on the south side.
Can you...
Sure.
Point out which is the rain garden that's for...
Feel free to come up and do that.
You're welcome to use this, and we have a, a mic?
Yep.
And then they have some sort of drain coming in here, like...
Do you need for this to be turned slightly over to you, Mr. Sweet?
Oh, I just...
Okay.
Do you want to use the pointer?
I gave him one.
Oh, you gave him one. Okay.
Everybody's got pointers.
That's not on.
No, it's on.
It should be.
It's on, but may not be on-on.
Like Star Wars.
It is.
It does.
I have one in my purse, but this is honest.
Yeah.
Low battery.
If, you could probably just sit there and point.
Sit there.
The watchers get a comedy hour.
Oh, I don't know. NBC had Laugh-In.
That's why we have a program.
Thank you. The rain garden is this area right here. It's labeled Rain Garden.
Just wanted to remind you, I think we're trying to film this, so...
Okay.
There you go.
The rain garden is by our lower entrance, and what that will do is service the water that lands on the canopy. There's internal drains and gutters on the canopy, so that water will go to its own rain garden versus going into the storm sewer system that exists today. The rest of the lot will continue to drain to the storm sewer we have. We're relocating one catch basin by the canopy where the blacktop is being extended out towards the road. And that will definitely fit the new snout. The rest of the catch basins on the site, we're proposing the tees, or if the snouts do not fit.
What's the snout?
A snout acts as a gas hood or oil-water separator. It attaches to the outlet of the, of the catch basin pipe. And it allows, if any oil or gas enters the catch basin, if there's a spill, it allows it to float on the surface where we can retrieve it versus flowing out of the pipe.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the plants you have in the rain garden. So, it's the farthest south rather than the most, the closest one to the canopy?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is that so you can get the proper pitch and runoff on your drainage there?
Oh, no, I could definitely pitch into the catch basin nearest.
The reason why I ask about the landscaping is the plants that are in the rain garden aren't what's shown on the DEC Storm Manual is suitable for a rain garden. Oh. You have a couple of invasives in there, too. It's, I believe the plants that are suitable for rain gardens are listed in the back of the DEC Storm Water Manual Guide. I think you need to just take a, it's a minor point. And then there's also, you have Euanumus alatus, or burning bush euanumus, and redleaf barberry, both of which we don't allow in the town because they're highly invasive. They go way off-site. So, you'll need to just take a look at those two.
Barberries and the burning bush?
And the burning bush euanumus, yeah. This particular, this year, I've been picking up burning bush euanumus all over my property, little babies. Like I said, and I only have two on my whole property. They spread.
She's getting out.
Yeah. I'll be happy to send you an email memorializing these comments, too, if that'll be helpful for you.
Thank you.
Any other details you want to provide? Because I have one other question. Go ahead. Why are you tearing up the sidewalk in front of the building?
It's deteriorated to the point, and there are planters in the sidewalk now, and it's very hard to keep things looking decent there with, they tend to get trampled with people, and they turn into ashtrays, and so we'd like to fill those in and just have a sidewalk, a regular sidewalk.
And hence you're adding more plant, more plantings around the site.
Yeah.
Very nice trade-off. Okay. Let me start with the consultants as usual. Ms. Axelsson, any comments?
Yeah, I kind of have a few comments and questions. Initially, I had started to write up some comments asking for trees, more trees on the site, and particularly along the frontage, but then my boss drove by and I drove by. There are trees there already, but it wasn't reflected on the plans, so...
Right.
I'm assuming that when you say replace landscaping, that you'll be leaving those trees and protecting them?
Those trees are in the expanded area, so they would not be able to stay.
Okay, so then we will need you to replace, we will need you to add trees to the landscaping.
Add trees.
Okay. Okay, so those will be removed. Okay.
I might add, you're showing your landscaping detail, planting for trees, but there are no trees proposed. You have evergreens and...
I did notice in the legend, but they aren't labeled. But we are not showing any on the site.
Right. But you see right there in the right-hand corner, you've got a planting detail for trees.
Well, it also has it for the bush. It's the same detail, so it's probably standardized. But we...
Correct.
And then, there's no change to the building, right?
That is correct. I'm not proposing any changes to the building. We may do a counter change inside, but that's a separate...
Right, but nothing to the facade.
Nothing we do. We don't review that.
And then, I noticed on the aerial that there's some dirt, sort of circular dirt trails on your sort of, I guess it would be northern lawn or northeastern lawn? I just noticed it on the aerial, and so I, you know, it just looked like there were some kind of little dirt trails up there.
Actually, I have that.
Yeah.
Want to come take a look? It looks as though, I believe this is still its property. It looks like someone's using this and then coming back out here to your place, maybe to buy something. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a pretty steep bank, so you wouldn't be able to see it from our lot. It's probably a 15-foot difference in elevation from that, so technically maybe our property, but I'm unaware of any.
Just making sure you know.
Okay.
Right, okay. And then, I know that, let's see, we looked at the accesses, and I know they're existing, and I know that they're both two-way, but we wondered if you would consider turning the southern access into a one-way enter-only, and, you know, maybe accomplish that with some striping. The concern there is with vehicular conflicts, people exiting, possibly going left or right, and then leave the northern one as two-way.
I would definitely prefer to leave them both as they exist, the two-way access. And that's for customer convenience as well as our deliveries. I'm not sure which way they come. We have tankers that go in and out as well. I would prefer, and with a 45 mile an hour road, I think I'd rather have both accesses unrestricted.
It appears that some of the work you're doing is in DOT right-of-way.
Yes.
So, we'll be referring this to DOT because you'll need a work permit.
That's correct.
With all due respect, I actually don't utilize this site. I think I've been there once, since I've lived here 20 years. But just in looking at it, the right-hand turn as you're going north to enter seems pretty acute, and in talking anecdotally to people, they've mentioned how they feel unsafe because it's, you have to slow down so much, take a hard right, and then proceed throughout. I noticed that you're doing some smoothing later on of the entrance. You're kind of opening it up there, which I think is also[1719.25] I noticed that you're doing some smoothing later on of the entrance, you're kind of opening it up there, which I think is also a good idea. You get more room around your canopy that way. But we will, we'll just, I think it's prudent for us to make sure that we talk to DOT to see what they think about how that works. Because if this was built in 1997, 1997, their standards, what they look at may have changed slightly. I'm not sure they will tell you to do anything, but it's just, it's come up in conversations with various individuals since I looked at it, who said sometimes they don't use this space just because they find it so hard to go into, that's all.
I'd like to hear what the board thinks of that when, when we get around to it.
Sure.
And then I know another consideration was sidewalks or a bike lane along the frontage. And that was in recognition of the fact that there are some nearby neighborhoods and businesses here and there. And that we are generally asking for sidewalks along frontage wherever we can.
And the code requires it.
And the code requires it, yes.
I didn't notice any sidewalks on my just-site visit up and down the road.
Well, we're, you know, we're, we're trying to put it together, and that's why it's in the code.
Current code was adopted in 2005, requiring sidewalks along the front, from property line to property line. And we have made exceptions, it's a standard that we're allowed to relax, it's at our discretion. We've made some exceptions, for the example for Hess, because there was no neighborhood around it, and the Marichi kill flows right around it, there'd never be a way to extend the sidewalk. But just to the north, you have, I believe it's Trans-Tech, which was before a planning board in the past, when sidewalks weren't required, but in the past that you have Big Meadow, Big Meadow Lane, I think it is. And back in through, there is a neighborhood off Hook, it opens up that, Ms. Dexter, who grew up here. The Arbors, it's a really large housing, condominium complex now, it was rentals originally. And they have, there are kids who walk down the street over to Stewart's to buy ice cream and stuff, so. I think that's a consideration the board needs to take on its own, as to whether or not we want to require a sidewalk here.
Yeah, I think it's worth it.
As part of the code.
If you look at the, and you just open up from the site and zoom out and look at the different neighborhoods that are nearby.
And Trans-Tech at some point will probably be before us, whether that's a change in use or an expansion or something, and I think we would then require the sidewalk as well. Again, just so that we could have, this is a neighborhood business district, so the neighborhood could come down and accommodate themselves. Stewart's does a nice job of keeping picnic tables, benches, there are a lot of people I see sitting outside when I go by. So that's what we're supposed to be encouraging in NBDs as well, is places to gather. And make it safe and easy to get there to gather, so.
We, we have many stores, if you're familiar with, 331 stores, we've definitely put it in the position to, to ask for sidewalks or put sidewalks in. But we have also incurred a lot of expense to install a sidewalk where none other exists. And a sidewalk lasts for about 10 years, and then has to be replaced again, there's a lot of maintenance with sidewalks, snow plowing, et cetera, when the sidewalk is there, it needs to be maintained. I would make, I'm not speaking in favor or against, but I would make a suggestion that, could I agree to a sidewalk if we're, I mean, it's, it's tough to be the only person on the street with a sidewalk that goes nowhere. If the neighbors do agree to a sidewalk, could I put money in escrow, could I agree to it at this point, so that it would happen at a later date? It's just a unused sidewalk.
Let our attorney think about that, and just so you, you're, you're being very nice, you're not being argumentative, so I'll do the same. Sidewalks that go nowhere typically create paths to the lawns of the properties next door, showing where the sidewalk is supposed to be. And we, we've had a lot of redevelopment lately with a big emphasis on sidewalks in the community. If this, if there weren't a neighborhood adjacent to you, I think we'd probably look at you and go, not the right place. Because it's mostly a highway business area down there, but it's because you've got such a big neighborhood. And this is more of a discussion for you to go and look and see where you could put a sidewalk, because it's a little tight in through there. I was looking very carefully, particularly with you ratcheting back, or taking back some of the green space for the expansion you need to have access around the new canopy. It's going to be tighter in through there, so you have a rip rap, a swale, so take a look and see what you see. We believe that we found a place where you can put the sidewalk all the way from side to side. And of course, you haven't heard from the rest of the board yet, you're only hearing from me and our consultant so far, so.
And only one last bit, is that if I, if, if it was a trade-off between sidewalks versus the two-way access becoming one-way, I really feel there's a higher priority for sidewalks in the community. And it's something the planning board is consistently asking for, so, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Palladoro?
Just to remind everyone that sidewalks are required, but they can be waived by the board upon a showing of good cause.
Thank you. Mr. Alvaro, I'm going to start with you on this one, any comments?
I'd have to agree with Ms. Axelson on the importance of a walkway on the site with the neighborhood, you know, adjacent to the site. And I would agree, I would much rather see a, a walkway or sidewalk put in place than, than restricting that access. One note on the plantings, I see the spiderwort and the salvia and the, the piglet fountain grass. I don't know if they're going to be great fits for the area, the spiderwort tends to kind of fall down when it gets wet. And, you know, you have 15 of them, you know, you might want to look for something a little more sturdy. And they also, they seed every year, and they'll spread, and they're not as invasive as, like the burning bush or the barberry, but they will take over your landscape and you'll be battling a maintenance issue. Same thing with the, with the salvia and the, the piglet fountain grass, maybe look at a, like a hemlin fountain grass. That might be a, a better species for you.
Okay, I'll look into it.
And that, that's about it for me.
Chris, do you want to spell hemlin for, for gentlemen?
H-E-M-L-I-N.
I had it right.
Good, okay. Well, it's easy to Google once you, if you have the name right, that's all. Ms. Dexter?
Just a couple of questions and comments. The, as far as the sidewalk, I'm not sure I would say that you need to have one that goes across the entire site, because really the concentration of people walking, I think, would be from the north. I think I could be convinced that you just need to tie one north to, at least it could get off the road once they hit your site, and that would guide them in. The expanded canopy and the expansion of the blacktop, are you losing the parking spots in the front?
There are four there now.
We have parking at the building.
Right, there had been four right along the, you can see on this aerial.
You have four down here, along the edge?
The western.
It's shown also in very light shading on one of your plans?
I do see them now, yes, thank you.
Here's what's happening, is you're losing those because you're expanding the canopy toward the west.
Correct.
And again, to provide access around it, you're losing those, however, the way our code operates, we count parking spaces by pooling dispensers as well.
Thank you.
So you're not actually losing any, it's, you're netting out, it's the same amount.
That being said, it looks like there is room to stripe, as they are today on that edge, if the board would prefer. What I tend to find is when I have an edge, a long edge of blacktop like that, people will park there anyway, whether it's striped or not. Especially the landscape trailer, people, the pickup trucks, et cetera, tend to use a bigger area. I will stripe it if the board would like, but it will get used whether it's striped or not, just judging from our own other stores.
Can I, then let me ask, would that impact, because the way it's currently designed, it's like you have a, a way to drive around the canopy and park. And so what you just described is drive around it or park.
Park under the canopy or alongside the blacktop.
Right, but there would not be also a pass-through lane?
That is correct.
Like there currently is. I hate to see, I hate to see the additional blacktop go in. But I do understand that if you're adding, there's no way for you to add in additional pumps the other way, going the long way, where you seem to have lots of expansion room?
Grading doesn't really allow that, the slope of the site.
But right there, it's not sloped.
It's the high point, right now I'm at the crown of the lot. So if I try to move dispensers in any other direction, I start dealing with the grade to each.
How severe is that grade?
It gets pretty severe. More than I would want to put gas pumps on. And have them function well.
Yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm not really, I'm not really happy that, that you're adding impervious there, and anyway, I'm not, I wish, I wish you could move it more north and south as opposed to east and west. Because when you're on the site, it's actually, I mean, it's, I mean, it doesn't feel like you're really on a.
It doesn't, but drainage-wise, we don't expect any customers to be standing where water will run. So we are at the very crown, from the front door to the canopy is a crown in the lot. So the customers are walking on the high point of the lot, so in theory, no water is running by as you're walking in and out of the store.
Right. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're going to be upgrading the tanks, then you will have that entire area all dug up anyway. So to do any kind of.
Not to that extent.
Re-grading?
The building elevation doesn't change, so finished floor is what it is today. So I still need to get from finished floor to the road in both directions. So the, those elevations don't change, so yes, I'm, I can tweak blacktop here and there, but I wouldn't want to make this entrance steeper.
You're keeping the business open while you redo this.
Oh, yes.
The store can stay open, I get you.
That's correct, yes.
Normally, in Hyde Park, when we've had tanks replaced, they've shut down the business because the space has been so tight. They can't access the main store, so.
We do this in many tighter sites than this. We replace about 20 sites a year, gas tank-wise, all voluntary. And we have geologists on staff, and we have people on staff, and this is their primary function, is to deal with logistics and any environmental issues.
I might add, I don't believe Mr. Sotero, our engineer, has had a chance to look at this completely, for stormwater passage, et cetera?
Andy Lynn took a look at it, and so he started to draft some stormwater and grading-type comments.
Okay.
You know, some of it's clarification to see, you know, what exactly.
This be folded in, so we'll have a comment just from more.
Yes, it's going to be one letter that's from Andy and I.
Perfect.
I assume that's where the rain garden came from.
And then I just have two additional comments, one is, you said there's no, there's no change to the actual store, to the retail store. Does that, I'm trying to remember if that has some kind of canopy or clambering or something at the top?
I did not bring an elevation, but there is a small gable end over the front door.
It's got, it has some kind of.
Yes, that's correct.
Like cedar shingles or something on it?
I think it's collaborative siding, but yes.
So you would not be doing anything to that, to make that maybe blend in better with the canopy?
I have to look at the condition of the sign. It's probably something that should be considered, is replacement of the sign that exists there, so that would affect that area. It's not a big triangle of space.
Yeah, it's not big, but I, you know, most places, if you're going to upgrade, and then you take another, you take a look at that, it's going to look old and.
Correct, no, you're right, we should take a look at that, yeah.
And then, then my final comment at this point is, because you are expanding the blacktop towards Route 9, I would love to see pretty much a, a solid row of some kind of evergreen tree or something that would kind of screen all that additional blacktop from the road.
We will definitely look at trees, is evergreen the preferred, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about evergreen when.
But, but it's something that seasonally would screen. To me, it's, it's going to be kind of a big change, and it'll look, it'll look a lot bigger, it's, it's going to look a lot more industrial.
I do have to consider a sign I have out there as well, which is a monument sign, it's low. Deciduous trees, I can see, street trees, I can see the sign under.
No, I guess I'm talking like immediately to the west of the canopy, so kind of along that area.
That's where my sign is, right?
That's where your sign is.
Yes, it's the only sign I have for any gas advertising. I don't have anything on the canopy, the sign is right here.
Oh, right.
So I would be worried about blocking that with evergreen.
Deciduous trees are limbed up properly for people to see the sign.
Correct, and the sign is a monument sign, so it's lower.
The sign is actually a big improvement with the stone base, the plinth?
Correct, the sign is right here. It stands, the sign itself is four foot 10 with a two-foot base, so almost seven feet tall.
Okay, well, I guess that's a shame then, that I, I would prefer to see additional screening.
Would signs on the canopy be a trade-off?
What's that?
Would signs on the canopy be a trade-off? Digital signs on north and south.
They're not allowed. They're not allowed.
I guess that's a no.
It's not something that's at our discretion, so. Since you brought, before I go on to my left, since you brought it up, I believe the Stewart's sign that's on the gable end wall, the pediment, I believe it's non-conforming. And all signs have to come into conformance next year by but, it's like July or August, I believe. So if you're going to consider that, you can come back to us with a sep, special, a separate sign permit. It's cost $50, but since you're going through this process, if you want to change it, you can change it now, we can approve it. But I believe the Stewart's sign is internally lit that's there now, which signs are no longer allowed to be internally lit. And I think your letter height exceeds, our, the code reads it's 10 inches, but we're allowed to increase dimensionally an inch per every 20 feet your setbacks. And that Stewart's sto, store and the sign is set pretty far back, so again, it's at our discretion, it's not a guarantee, but if you're requesting larger letters, you would have to go to the ZBA for a variance. That noted, I'm not sure that Ms. Moss has pointed out to you, but your swoosh, I guess I'm going to call it?
Yes.
Will require a variance, I don't mean that really, it's just that's the way it is.
I'm before the ZBA anyway.
Ah ha, you were smart enough to do it, very good. Okay, that'll be looking, they are required to have us opine on variance, area variance requests, so that'll be coming back to the board, just. I think it looks nice, but that's up to the rest of the board to decide. And by the way, the ZBA can ignore us or not, it's just a requirement they refer to us. Mr. Granger, any comments?
Just a quick comment. Is the, the ground to the base or the ground clearance, if you will, someone wants to bring a truck in there, is that changing at all with the new canopy?
Oh, no, 14 six clear, 14 feet.
And that's what's currently there?
Correct, yeah, I think DOT is.
And you don't know the anticipation of adding diesel, do you?
We do not.
Any other comment, I'm not 100% sure of the height of the lettering, or is that one of the things you're doing for the gas price?
The 10-inch letters?
Well, no, if we read the notes below, I thought it said the gas price numbers are 12-inch, that's all. If you read the last note.
That is correct.
Now, I don't think we would have any problem giving you a variance on that.
No, we can't get variances, and we can only give them a dimensional increase if you set more than 20 feet back from the primary redway.
We'd have to measure it. It looks like you might be close.
What a good catch. Even beady-eyed me didn't get that one.
It's just that 20 feet.
We'll, we'll have time to go through, they need to measure it tonight, but you'll need to add a request for us to.
Edge of the road, meaning edge of blacktop?
It's actually from the fog line.
Okay, it's to the fog line, I'm over 30.
Then you'll ask us for a dimensional increase of two inches for the.
Certainly grant that, it's a high-speed road, it's a heavy road.
And people are looking for the price.
But you need to make that request to us.
Numbers, very good catch, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, Liz asks for a comment on the ingress egress. Maybe wrong, but I think that's the state DOT that decides that. I don't think we ought to run clients through it twice, all right? I don't think we ought to use it as a bargaining chip on the sidewalk. I think it's the DOT's purview, and the last court case that Hyde Park had, I believe, a couple hundred thousand dollars, we found out that was the DOT's purview.
It's certainly the DOT's purview.
Yeah, no, we can make a recommendation, I know all that.
No, no, it's also, it's, if it's, we feel it's a safety issue, then it's a seeker issue, but that would, that has to rise to pretty.
Yeah, we're going to have some accidents there or something, because it's already existing, but that's my minority. All right, I, I think that this, you know, can work out, I, I would like to get as much, you know, low screen as we can get on, in the front, you know, just to make it look a little less industrial. I don't usually agree with Anne, but I see this, this time. So I, you know, if we can do that, I'm open to increasing the size of the letters on the sign so that people can see it easier going by, all right? But again, I'd just like to see something a little softer in front.
Thank you.
Would it be helpful if the applicant provided, like, an elevation showing the front with the proposed landscaping in the sign, so you have a, like a color rendering of what it's going to look like?
Okay.
Yeah, that would help.
Just be aware too, that unless you have really tall, mature trees, which I don't think that they're going to spring for that, you're not going to miss the Stewart's building sign itself. And so what we really want to do here, as everyone's noted, it's one of the higher-speed areas in the community. We want to make sure that people are able to see the pricing of the sign, the gas pricing, not so that they're way past it and have to turn back around, so. But you're not going to ever really screen the Stewart's building until 50 years for, for a deciduous. Even the faster-growing ones aren't going to do anything like that.
I mean, also so the board can see the difference between the street trees that are proposed versus a lower shrub or.
Right. Mr. Signer?
Yes, I agree with comments that my colleagues made. The one issue that I saw is the site itself entering the site from the south. And we all mentioned that it's a high-speed road going by there. It's difficult at times, and some residents have commented that it's actually difficult to turn in there with traffic speeding down. So is there any way to soften the entrance and it would reinforce the idea of one-way in on that south entrance? And it might even help your business, because if people see gas there, they're sometimes way past it and have to make that sharp turn to get into the site.
I would suggest maybe a stripe down the middle of the entrance to help define, because it is a turn when you come in, versus cutting the corner versus the one-way.
I believe what he's talking about is, yep, soften, not just the entrance, but softening that, that immediate curve to the right, because you own more of the land. Is there something physically that's preventing you from making the...
At the time, it was probably a DOT spec.
That's what I have a feeling of. That's why I said, they made, it's, I agree with Mr. Murphy. I think, I raised the issue only because I wanna make sure you're aware of it. I think it hurts, you know, your business if I'm hearing from residents, oh, I don't go there because it's too tight to try to get in. I do hear people that they are, when they're heading the opposite direction, they'll come in this way and not worry about it. But it's because you're going up, it's pretty fast, people are, it's, the speed limit is, people are basically going fifty-five to sixty there, because it's a four lane. And you're just zooming out of Poughkeepsie, so.
I will look at that radius though, on the inside.
Yeah. I mean, what I thought you would do, or could do, is soften the southern section and then bring the northern sort of portion, I'll call it, out as well. The reason why I think Ms. Ackelson mentioned a one-way in there and a two-way out up there is that's what Hess was required by DOT under their current specifications. And once you have to reply for a work permit, as you know, they can kind of tell you whatever they want you to do. But we'll, we'll, we'll be referring that to DOT, so we'll let them kind of take the lead on that. I just had a couple of other things. One, the lighting foot candles should be zero at the property edge. They're not in every case. They're pretty low, but just so you know. And also, I can pretty much guarantee you that you have some really hot spots underneath the canopy. I'm aware that those are directed LED lighting, so it's, they're gonna be small. But I, I have a feeling, just so you know, we may have DC planning object, because I haven't seen foot candles that high anywhere, that we've been doing a lot of fielding stations lately, upgrades. You're hitting like thirty-seven at one point. And they may, just based on that one thing, require a super majority. I'm just letting you know in advance. Sidewalk, we've all discussed. The plantings you've heard, I think they need to be reviewed. You should add some trees. I agree with you. I think that evergreens, they would help green up and soften the site, but I think also that they might ultimately obscure the sign. And as they age out, unless you're doing a good maintenance of them, they're probably not gonna do well right there, to be honest with you, because of the nature of the slope. The light poles, you've shown it measured, you don't show it down to finish grade. You just have it down as sort of showing up, sort of a column. And I myself made a mistake years ago and accepted that, and then the column came out, it's actually four feet, so we had a eighteen-foot tall light.
Well, we're showing the...
You look down there, it doesn't go quite down to finish grade, I believe.
It says, there's a six-inch dimension on there.
Just add the six inches to the total. That's all. I mean, to your total height. It's not shown, I believe, as the total.
We're showing a fifteen-foot column and it says six-inch minimum. But you're right, we'll just put a six-inch.
As I say, just make it easy on, it's also from Ms. Moss. The other, another issue in terms of lighting, I don't know if everyone, how the rest of the board feels, but we were asking instead of for the light that's proposed, the basic box, for a beta pendant. It was recommended by the Hyde Park Lighting Committee in February twenty-third, two thousand and seven, and adopted by this board and the town board. It's basically this pole had, but with, instead of the acorn with a flat base. You'll see them around the rest of the town. We're trying, our code and our comprehensive plan asks us to create a sense of place. Do you want me to know the name of it? It's S E L L U X. Beta as in alpha beta pendant, the flat one. And you can take a look and see what your company feels like.
And that is a code or not a code?
Pardon me?
Recommendation, or it's a...
It's a recommendation. It was adopted, but it's not a requirement, but it's one of those things that the board usually likes to see, again, the same lighting consistently. They suggested that we treat the southern area all the way up to Pine Woods for these kinds of lights, and then once you go past Pine Woods, where you're back here in the more historic section that developed in the eighteen hundreds, to use a more Victorian style of lighting. Not the ones that are here anymore, but that's all the Central Hudson had back then. There are better ones now. We just haven't had any redevelopment in this area. You'd see different lighting in this area too.
We try to be consistent with the company, because we do stock all these lights in our house, we, so for us, it's easy to have...
I'm bringing this up for the board. As I said, I'm bringing it up for the board, that's all. Otherwise, I didn't see any issues. Again, it's a limited amount of amendment, so to speak, to the site plan, because you're not proposing changing the primary structure in any way, except possibly, as you said, interior. So that limits, I think, what we would all be interested in seeing changed. And I believe that you guys came to us, not you, but Stewart's came maybe three or four years ago?
It was me.
Was it? I thought you looked familiar. At the time, I told you we didn't allow flat roofs. Since then, we've discovered the standard, we can relax, and we started doing that in certain cases, particularly for these. Because when we had a peaked roof at Hess, we had that ugly fire suppression equipment hanging out, which makes me cringe when I drive by.
If you recall, we withdrew, we withdrew the application because of that then. So it's a nice change.
So, well, we didn't know we were allowed to at the time, to tell you the truth. So is your fire suppression equipment all buried up inside there?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I think that we can recommend, waiving the requirement for a peaked roof in this area as a consequence.
It also ties into the canopy height, it was mentioned before. If the canopy gets above the fourteen-six that we're shown, then it has to be on a rack below.
Aha.
And if we do put the canopy on a slope, the clearance goes by the smallest dimension, not the largest, so if, if the canopy's on a slope, you will definitely have it on a rack low, under the canopy, the fire.
This looks much cleaner, I'll be honest with you. I don't even like to go into Hess now. I shouldn't say that. I love Hess. But I, it looks like Christmas with the red and the green everywhere. It's an aesthetic violation on me, that's why, so. There being no other comments, do you want me...
Actually, I have one more.
Aha, please.
After hearing some of my colleagues' input about softening up the front, maybe with the evergreens, I'm not sure if that would be the best solution, but for those the columns that you're gonna have to support the canopy, maybe if you could do like a four-foot-high stone veneer column to tie into the monument sign, I think it might, you know, soften how that is gonna look from the road.
Do you mean at the base?
Yeah, at the bases, to kind of do a four-foot tall by two-foot by two-foot stone veneer column around it. Might be a nice, a nice addition. Maybe tie into the side of the building.
Yes, it would be.
Any other comments from anyone? Okay, so what we should do, I think, is, do you, would you, you've been taking pretty careful notes. Do you need me to review any of this for you to send back by email or by, you'll be getting a comment letter from Morris Associates, Ms. Ackelson and I.
That would be helpful, just so I'd make sure I didn't miss it.
I can summarize everything to make sure, then you can go back through, and do you guys want to put this on the agenda for the fourth, to type the action and refer? Do you think we should wait till we get some more information?
I think you're gonna wanna refer the revised plans out.
That's what I thought.
So depending on what your turnaround time is, you can be on the agenda for the fourth, or...
No, his turnaround, he'd have to be submitting tomorrow. I think that, well, it's, we're supposed to have two weeks. How would the board feel if, how, how long do you think it would take you to add additional? You're not even going to get the comment letter from Morris Associates. Oh, so Mr. Lern and Mr. Sotero's comments are already incorporated in there. Great. How long do you think it would take you to turn around?
I'd probably have it done for next Wednesday.
Then, board, do you think since they're already in the process, we can cut them a little slack so we can get it started and going?
I'm absolutely in support, so they can get this thing done.
Good. So let's place this on the agenda for June fourth. You can submit revised materials during that time, and I will work diligently tomorrow to get my handwritten notes into a memo to you as well. Do I have your email? Don't say it on TV, just give it to Ms. Moss. I mean, to Ms. Knapp. I've said mine before and I started getting... But not, don't say it on television. Wait and just... You may, you may get...
You can use the same one you have on file for my coworker also.
Mr. Fowler, I'm assuming you realize it's a holiday weekend.
I am, but we have three on-staff drafters, so.
Oh, great. That helps. Okay. Then I'll get this to you tomorrow. We'll get both memos, I'll reach you tomorrow, and we'll see you on the fourth. If there's any problem, just let me know and we can put you onto the eighteenth. All right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on another store we have here?
Sure.
Just to get your opinion. I was there today. The other store we have in, in East Park.
The tighter space.
What do you call it?
The tighter space, much smaller space. This one's a much bigger parcel.
The building is looking a little homely. It's brick, a lot of brick. Could I make a proposal just to, just to get the board's thoughts before I proceed with this? If I added columns to the brick or even paint the brick, would that be something I should pursue? To soften the look?
Think of this as a pre-app meeting.
So...
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you talking about painting all the brick?
Yes, and adding columns.
What's, what's interesting is when it was expanded, there was a lot of effort put in to find matching brick for that expansion.
Okay. And there's a lot of brick. So this is something we've done at other stores as well, as you can see the pictures of other stores. We're just starting to, trying to make a few changes with our facade, so.
What if you maybe added the columns and some sort of colorful canopy? Rather than get rid of all the brick?
I don't know, what do you think?
Is the brick itself actually deteriorating? Is that what's happening?
No, not deteriorating.
It's just trying to upgrade.
It's just trying to brighten the store a little bit. It looks dark and... I can come back with a better rendering.
I think the columns are attractive.
When you come back, come back with a better rendering.
Okay, I'll do that.
I, I think the columns are attractive.
I like the columns, yeah.
You're aware that the Stewart's shop signs will be subject to enforcement action in a year. They will, these are non-conforming now. I think that, truthfully, I shouldn't go out and say this, but if you wanted to paint the brick right now, there's no building permit required. There's nothing that would stop you. Unless...
Unless, unless it's part of their site plan.
Unless they have a sample of the bricks, but I don't think that this was ever, I don't think this was done, this didn't start, we didn't start asking for samples until we started.
And it's not on the site plan itself that it would be a brick?
Well, look.
No, I, I remember there was extensive discussion when this went through and that former board members said that they needed to spend a lot of time to find matching brick. And they did. So there's gotta be some record, I would think. That may have been when it started.
We can look in the file. The other thing is, this board always encourages aesthetic upgrades. Always. We'll be happy to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Because I agree, this could use some razzle-dazzle, which at least since the garden has been redone.
Well, I brought pictures with me of that, but I was happy to see. It looks much better than the last couple of years, because I was going to suggest that maybe Stewart's participate. But it looks like some changes were made and it looks much better.
Yeah, it does.
Along the wall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was helpful in doing that, that's why. The Teachers Association couldn't take it over anymore, or couldn't maintain it anymore, so we reduced the size and made the plantings easier and now have volunteer groups doing it, so.
Very good. We'll keep Stewart's in mind if they need help again.
We will, now that I have your contact information in particular. Thank you. Second to last item on, or rather, third to last item on the agenda is the signed permit recommendation for TEG Federal Credit Union. Did you all have a chance to review the letter that I sent out yesterday?
Absolutely, and I agree, you captured my concerns nicely. Thank you.
So may I get a motion to send it to the ZBA?
Yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second to last is, did you guys get a chance to take a look at the letter and the tap summary that I sent out today? I don't know that Donna actually has it here. Let me look. The town is seeking grant approval, or grant funding from the New York State Department of Transportation. It, no, she does not have it in here. I sent it out too late. Basically, they're looking for letters of support for this grant application. New York State Department of Transportation, the town board has been working with Sandra Jobson, their head of, Chris, do you know what her title is? Is it landscaping or?
She's the...
Design?
Landscape architect at New York State DOT.
So once she returned from maternity leave, we now have a new concept plan for Route Nine from basically the new light at the entrance to the FDR Library, all the way to this intersection. And it's been endorsed, it's been driven by the DOT. They took plans, including the old Route Nine corridor study, the recent Hyde Park walks, the Route Nine corridor access management plan, jointly adopted by DOT and the town, have come up with various suggestions and actually done a physical blueprint. What it includes ultimately is some on-street parking, more bumpouts to add trees. It's a pretty extensive plan. It's on three big whiteboards in the supervisor's office if anybody wants to see it. But the transportation alternatives program that we would be requesting the funding from requires a grant, a match, and we have a hundred thousand dollars we received from, I think, Senator Terry Gibson for infrastructure improvement, so this fits perfectly. So basically what the town is seeking to do is take a hundred thousand we got from the state and then leverage that to pick up another three hundred thousand in grant applications. And so they're looking for the planning board to provide a letter of support. And I sent it out to everybody. The reason why I put it on so quickly is I didn't realize it, but the application has to be filed with DOT by June the third. And our next meeting is at June the fourth. Oh, you did get it?
Yes, it's in our box.
It looks a little long. Sorry. If it was...
It just rolled up a little bit.
Yeah, the layout's a little weird, that's all.
Sorry, I need to fix that, clean that up, I guess. Sorry.
Tension on formatting change.
Yes. If everyone has had a chance to read it, can I get a motion to allow me to send it to the town board for inclusion in their grant application?
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That makes me happy. Now we make the town board happy. Then last is a discussion of the school district signs. And I see a very patient lady from Glode is here. Good to see you again. We're not gonna be discussing though the specific signs. What I wanted... Well, we can, but I wanted Victoria to lead us, or to lead a brief conversation. Because I realized that in the offline meetings, it's really only been Ed, Signa and I in these meetings, and there's been some complicating factors, I'll call it. So Victoria, let me first start by saying I assumed incorrectly that school district signage was not subject to site, uh, site plan and to the town's zoning ordinances. It turns out that that's not always the case. So there have been court cases that have established this. Ed, given his background in the school administration, was aware of them, quite aware, quite knowledgeable, and Victoria knows about it. So can you explain sort of where we are and how we might be reviewing these?
Sure. So the school, there used to be an old rule that if it was a governmental function, it was exempt, and if it was a proprietary function, then it was subject to the zoning law. And that became very difficult to enforce over years, because sometimes governments would do redevelopment projects or things that were quasi-governmental. So a new rule emerged in this case called County of Monroe. And that now requires a balancing test. So when there's a host government, in this case, the town of Hyde Park, and an encroaching government, in this case, the school district, the assumption is that they have to comply with the zoning law. And if they don't comply with the zoning law, you undergo this seven-factor balancing test to determine whether the non-compliant features should be permitted or whether they should be made to comply with the zoning law. And so there's a few policy issues that need to be worked out here, which is who would hold that Monroe hearing and do the policy test? You know, whether fees would have to be paid. The school district and the town are working out those nitpicky issues. But the big picture is that the signs should comply with the zoning law, and to the extent that they don't, this board will likely be responsible for determining whether or not to permit them.
And just to add something to that, if you've read Ms. Moss's letter about the signs, it appears that not a single one really ultimately conforms. But under the Monroe balancing doctrine, they would not need to go to the ZBA for variances. Instead, by us saying the needs of the school appear to embrace why these signs don't conform, we would essentially, in this instance, only I can think of, be saying, you get the variance, because that's not something that's normally within our purview at all.
Right.
The discussion, there's, there needs to be further discussion between the town attorney and the attorney to the central school district to make certain that both parties are in agreement. I think they will be, but the town attorney recently suggested that the ZBA do the Monroe Balancing Act instead of the planning board, so I know. And as I recall, that's, all the school district wants to do is get the signs up before the school year starts, so.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that may not happen regardless of how we move from this point forward. We're talking three-month fabrication. These signs, I, I would like to speak if I could.
Can you just come up to the...
For your benefit.
Sure.
In the paperwork that you received from Ms. Moss, I don't know if the narrative about, I know one of the big things is the digital board.
Speaking in a microphone before you get hooked.
Hello.
He's behind you with a hook, yes. He's behind you.
Just a few things that I'd, I'd like to point out to the board. I don't know how great those drawings are that you received, and I do have a full set of nice colored ones that are larger. I did not design these, these signs. I did not design these signs. They were designed by another firm. I think they did a great job. I think they kept a really nice, traditional look. Our, whether it be our polls or the headers, everything that you don't see in that drawing are notch outs and routed and V-carved. And there's a lot of dimension to them. Bringing all of the schools kind of into one format. Nice colors, the deep green, the gold. I do, I read the reviews that Ms. Moss put. And just one thing I would like to say about the digital reader boards. They do have capabilities to do many things. I've been working pretty seriously with three counties, four counties, many, many towns on implementing the new changeable boards. Each town has to form their own restrictions for them, whether that be the amount of times a message can change. It pretty much started with, there are many federal studies I can show you, state studies. A lot of them started with the traffic signs. And a lot of the towns are following kind of that rule. But I do have towns that are like, okay, we only want five messages a day allowed on that. So, the words, I take offense at the blinking, flashing, revolving, moving. It has those capabilities, but they do not have to be used. And most towns are putting restrictions on that. And most people don't care. It's specifically when you're talking commercial businesses, a lot of towns are only allowing them, they're being specific that they be allowed for only community-type-based situations. They are of a great value to towns. A lot of them take them on and put their restrictions on them for things like, they, some towns force them to sign up with Amber Alert. If an Amber Alert goes out, your sign goes down and up it comes. It has the ability to program into all national weather if there's any kind of severe weather coming to the community. It also, when there are power outages, specifically firehouses use them a lot. You know, it's a base where people know they can get information. You know, pick-up dry ice it, engine company, whatever, that type of thing. Use for nonprofits to share with your rotaries or any events that benefit the community. So, really, they're a community-based thing. And that's where the school's going with it. I did write a letter. I don't know if it's a part of your package. I would be happy, before any decisions are made, to bring a demo truck right here. And set up, I've done it for other towns. We have a truck. I only use one company and it's Watchfire. And that's who I've dealt the school with because it's all American-made and you don't have, you know, three months later, it's reading Arabic or something because half of it is out. It's a wonderful product. They've come with me to town meetings. We've done them at night when it's dark out, done them during the day. Put the information on that, comes right up out of the truck. View it from whatever angles you want, distances you want. These signs automatically power down to 30%. The one on the Haviland School, which is more of a residential street, not even planning on that being lit in the evening, unless there was a town emergency and they wanted it up there to provide for the public. But we also, in there is an issue, and I have been to DOT and I'm working with their real estate firm. No one has records of the current FDR sign located where it is, and it is on state property. That doesn't mean it can't stay. I'm working with them. I've done that before, too. They will happily lease their property.
They'll work an occupancy permit.
What's that?
An occupancy and, occupancy and something permit.
It's a lease that you actually pay by the year.
Yeah. They call it an occupancy permit, but we've had other signs that have actually been on DOT property.
Right.
So, it's, the purpose of tonight was, by the way, number one, I like your style and your amount of information. You make some persuasive arguments. I think the idea of us seeing it, if it comes to that, would be very helpful for the board. That noted, we just need to work out the behind-the-scenes with the school district. And that doesn't seem to be moving forward very quickly. I'm not sure why. So, I think, do you want to contact the attorney for the school district? Or do we think that Mr. Raplansky should do that?
Yeah, well, I'm working with Warren on those issues. But I think it may be helpful if the planning board could give the applicant some guidance on, like, things like the reader board and the location that are not compliant right now. If you could give the applicant some feedback on those features because if it's something that's definitely not going to pass, no matter how it balances.
Well, I don't think that we can say that it can't pass. We have to balance the, I mean...
Right. You'd have to undergo the balancing test, but you can give some preliminary feedback on some of the more...
As a former debater, I can see, I can see arguments on both sides. You just made a compelling argument to me about how the nature of the information would be so fast and so vastly transmitted, that it'd be really good for citizenry, particularly if it's, say, an Amber Alert for parents to know. I see a lot of good reasons why a school would say, no, we really need this ability to get our information out quickly. That noted, on the other side, I could say, yes, but the alerts are done now through Facebook, through a variety of social media sources for parents. They don't just rely on driving up and going, oh, school's out, there was a fire. So, there's arguments to be made on both sides. I would expect that the school district would be providing the argument for it. And then I would evaluate it that way because, I mean, I've seen some really bad signs, mostly done in Florida where the reader boards are huge and they have rolling things.
Right. And they're all capable of doing that. But the towns in places like where we live are not going to allow that. And your gas stations kind of started with that thing. It's the same thing, except theirs are just numbers.
The applicant should provide a narrative addressing all of the Monroe factors.
I don't have that. Can I get that? Like the balancing act that you're talking about, the seven items?
Right. So, we did meet with the school district attorney, and so he has that information. But if he hasn't passed it on to you, I'm happy to provide it to you once I get the okay from him.
Okay. I'll contact, I was up there today at district offices. So, that would be helpful on my end. And anything that I, you know, I can provide.
And then if you could give the board your narrative addressing each of those points, and this board can weigh it and they can decide.
Now, that noted, I personally think that the design unity of the signs is fantastic. I think they all look really good. I could see, I saw Ms. Heinz Schaefer when she was doing some initial work, and I saw the depth that's there because I saw it up close. So, I know that these are not cheapo signs. These are really elegant, nice signs that will last for a while and really do serve. I mean, a lot of people don't realize that certain schools are actually HP CSD, particularly, I'm forgetting, it's the elementary.
Netherwood?
Netherwood. Because it's not even really in the quote-unquote Hyde Park, it's outside the town.
I know. I'm already on ZBA for Netherwood and for Violet Avenue.
Correct. And I think that the location for the high school sign, I mean, it's one of those things, it's prior non-conforming, I guess we could call it, from DOT. It's on the DOT property.
You're on the ZBA in Poughkeepsie?
Yes. The application that's in the town of Poughkeepsie will be, that has to be in by noon tomorrow. It's all done, and Pleasant Valley has to be in on Friday.
Okay.
The sign for the FDR High School seems a logical place to me because they don't own the land all the way out to the road. And this tells you, hey, the high school's there. And you don't really see it that much during summer season and most of spring because there's trees, including your view. It's set pretty far back. So, I'm certainly in favor of that location if DOT says fine. So, I'm trying to give my sort of spiel there. The only thing that concerned me were the reader boards because they are internally lit. And I've seen them, as I said, do all sorts of zing, zang, wow. And Mr. Signa, I believe, early on said that can distract drivers.
Yes, I'm very concerned about that. You have young drivers, new drivers. And when you have reader boards and it's giving school announcements, we are aware of distractions. And any studies which would demonstrate that they are not a distraction that definitively show.
I will, I have tons of them for you. And I mean, it's like anything else, whether it be, they take less time to absorb and read that message than it does for a text or answering a phone.
My point is, it shouldn't be taking any time from away from them going into the school.
They're driving, when they're driving.
But you have...
Remember, you come down 9G southbound as you're coming to the light, okay? That's 55 mile an hour road. If I've got a sign, I'm trying to read that sign, and now it changes on me, I'm going to go right through that bloody traffic light. And there are many, many accidents that have occurred. That's why that light was put there at South Cross.
I can show...
I feel very strongly, I do not want to see a sign that's changeable there.
I can show you, well, I can have someone go out every hour and hand-change ones. That's a lot more distracting, watching somebody individually change numbers or letters on the sign. All I can do is provide you with all the federal studies that have been done, the state studies that have been done. Any towns that I've had them in for five years, I'd be happy to give you any traffic accidents that happened because of them.
Well, the reason for that traffic light is because of traffic accidents on that corner. That's where we have the probably the biggest problem with our young teenage drivers turning in to go to Roosevelt High School. And that's why we put the light there.
Mm-hmm. No, I...
I just don't want to ever see another distraction.
Mr. Grinnert also lives by the high school, so he has acute awareness after as many years here of what goes on there.
I, you know, quite honestly, you're presenting, if you found it wasn't safe, I'm sure you would not be recommending it. And I think you have to listen, and you will. And I'm confident that we'll be able to certainly do the safest thing.
I agree.
I mean, when you talked about towns being able to restrict how many messages can repeat, they can restrict flashing, some other things.
Generally, that's done through zoning.
Yeah. That's not something that I thought that we were allowed to do as a planning board unless it was already stitched early and memorialized in the code.
We can, we can talk about it, how it would come into play in a Monro...
Because our code says no internally-lit anything signage, so, and this is internally-lit, but...
Right. So, if you're going to be finding that, you know, the benefit outweighs the detriment, then I'm going to assume that you can place conditions on it.
Okay. Then, where do we go from here? I mean, because I don't want to keep dragging you out here at night. You have a special life.
I've been doing this for 36 years, two, three nights a week. This is part of my life, so.
Okay.
And the only reason, I pointed out, gas station, just the exact modules and things that are used, exact same lighting as those. Same thing, just better clarity.
And we changed the code, actually specifically, to allow fueling stations to have those digital pricing. Because at the time, the fuel prices were so crazy. People were going outside three times a day just to change the price, which seemed unsafe because all the old signs are way up high. So, you're going to pursue this with Mr. Raplansky, the town attorney? Then, we will work this with the school district?
I'd like to be able to give Mr. Raplansky a recommendation. Everyone has received a copy of the draft policy. I believe it was emailed to everyone two weeks ago. So, one of the comments, one of the items for discussion is who should do the balancing test? Should it be done at the planning board level or at the zoning board level? And so, if you have a preference, I'd like to be able to convey that to the town attorney.
Well, before we say there's a preference, because I'd always love to give word to my sister board and take it off us. It would still have to come back to us.
It still would have to come back to you, yes.
And we'd have to agree or disagree with their findings?
Well, this board grants the sign permit.
That's all we would do then, once they gave, they would in essence be giving the... Well, colleagues, I just want to say two things. One, the zoning board of appeals meets only once a month. We do meet twice a month, and we could review this more expeditiously, I do believe. But that noted, I defer to the rest of you.
Well, there's two lawyers involved, so you know expeditious isn't going to happen.
Three, three, three.
Three, three makes it even worse.
Chan, I need a laugh track for when you talk.
But, you know, I think we ought to do is say to the zoning board, do you want to mess with it? And if they do, then let them. And if they don't, then we'll do the whole thing ourselves.
Anybody else?
I think I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, the zoning board was set up for exactly this type of situation.
Because it's a quasi-judicial.
Give them the choice.
Okay. If you're going to deviate from the law or what's town code, that's why we have the zoning board of appeals.
As I said, I'm happy to agree with this, our agendas.
But I think we should honestly ask them, do they want to take on this role? And I think that's a fair question. Maybe you and Ms. Donahue should maybe have a discussion.
I don't believe they've been privy to any of this discussion either, no.
And it wouldn't just be for signs. I mean, it would be for...
For the structures and every, all these other things.
The site plan, right now, for Hyde Park Elementary, there was something proposed in there.
For non-district use.
We've said it had to comply. But say they propose something that wouldn't be a permitted use in the district, in the zoning district, then this balancing test would apply. So, it's not just signs, it's site plans as well.
Think of it as, I think the analogy that's closest would be, originally, this board did not do special use permits. So, if someone had to apply for a site plan and needed a special use permit, it automatically would revert to the ZBA. And then it died here until it went through the special use permit process. Then it came back for site plan work. If there was something like a commercial enterprise or non-district, a proprietary use at Hyperkill Elementary, that would be the same thing. If a business was trying to go in there, if we said, well, the balancing act has to be done by the ZBA, then it would sort of disappear from us for a while because they would determine if it was even allowed. Then it would come back to us for regular site plan elements. So, it's, like I said, it's, there's, you're, in effect, somewhat bifurcating the process if we have the ZBA do it. On the other hand, if we feel like that their training and their natural proclivities, given the nature of their jobs, is better for them to do this, then I think we should allow them.
The other issue is that procedurally, seeker should be done before the Monroe balancing test.
And we have an agreement with the ZBA that we always do seeker, both agencies are involved.
Yes.
How do you do seeker before the Monroe Balancing Act? Just, I thought that was part of it? No?
It's a little confusing, but you have to assess the environmental impacts and then you take that into consideration when you do the zoning impacts.
Okay. So, this sounds complicated. Why don't you guys?
It's actually not that complicated.
Once we get through a procedure, this is the problem, everyone. We just don't have a procedure set up because we never knew we needed to. Whether that was my fault or the school district's fault or anybody's fault, we don't know. But this did never come up before.
Well, I mean, the other option is, we don't have to worry about this procedure. They could just apply to the zoning board for the use variances, but...
I think this is easier. And by the way...
Area variances.
No internally-lit sites.
Oh, that's the use.
That's a use variance, those are hard to go.
Right. Everything else is the area variance, height and size.
I think it's easier for us, for another board to take, use Monroe to not have to make you go through the variance process. So, that's why I kept it on the agenda tonight. What we'll do is work behind the scenes and then...
Oh, I just wonder if any of the board members had comments on the policy. I know Ed does. But did anyone else have any suggestions or thoughts on it?
I would like to just probably put some in writing, send them off to you. Just nothing, nothing severe. I actually think it's a great idea because times are changing and probably see more and more different uses for some of our former schools. And just in general, I mean, I think the idea of sign unity across the board is great, but I am, I would just caution that any changes that are allowed for the school district, we will, we can guarantee that we'll have a commercial applicant in front of us within five minutes asking for the exact same type of signage. And I would find that very hard. I would like to see that memorialized in our zoning.
That's where the commercial, as opposed to non-commercial, sometimes comes in on some of them. Yeah, and if you would let me know about the demonstration so that I would be able to, once you know who's going to see it.
Sorry, I thought you were done. I just came back from Florida, and I have to tell you, the signage in Florida, particularly along the Gulf Coast, it's such a complete hodgepodge. And it is a huge traffic distraction. along the Gulf Coast, it's such a complete hodgepodge, and it is a huge traffic distraction. And I can guarantee you, and my first thought on this whole thing was, the moment we let the school board, by the high school have a motion sign, I guarantee you, we have a hard enough time with commercial businesses succeeding in Hyde Park. They're going to ask for the exact same signage.
But that's, that's why the words blinking, if you look at definition, blinking, flashing, revolving, that's what they're used for, commercial purposes, and you go down to Jersey, and, and they're crazy. That is, that is why I need to demonstrate to you who can see it.
But if we allow the school board to get, to do this, okay, particularly in what I consider the most dangerous area of Hyde Park, where we have all of these junior drivers, okay? And it's not just daylight, because it's dark in the winter time, yes, they can be out to whatever it is, eight or nine at night, but jeez, we have school functions, and darn if they don't go to them. And I, I just feel very strongly that this is the wrong location for it, bottom line.
You've heard one opinion, you've heard one strongly made opinion from the board.
No, that's, believe me, I'm, I'm very used to it, and all I ask is the opportunity to supply any type of information that is available on them, so that whatever judgment is made is made with full knowledge. That's all I ask.
I know. That, that sounds fair. The, I would say we could schedule this in two weeks, but I feel like if we haven't resolved who's going to do this, I don't want you coming here and spending time before us if it's going to be the ZBA.
And, and my, my comments are, are in general for this process and not for the specific sign permits that I've viewed.
Okay.
I have other comments on those, but I, I don't, I feel it's very premature, you can be talking about anything specific.
Yeah, Ms. Moss's review letters, you know, they took very detailed points of not compliance, not compliance, but she also had more general comments on like three of them. Consider, consideration seems to have been made for the speed, you know, the size, the highway, the entrance, everything. So, it's not as though all of them are so non-compliant that they seem egregious by any means, because I think it was at least three of them that she kind of gave compliments to. And I found more that I could compliment as well, just on the overall aesthetics. But I want to resolve first, before we put this back on, who's going to do this, what the process is, and we, how long ago did we meet? Six weeks ago, two months ago?
Yeah, it was two months ago.
And I believe that...
Twice.
So, Victoria, we're going to let you and Warren work it out, and then involve the central school district attorney, and then you can advise me, and I'll, we'll...
And I'll get those...
Nancy, right?
I'll call the district, yes.
Nancy, that's what I thought. We'll contact Nancy at Gloody, and then just get her up here, and we can have the demonstration and start the process.
You can talk to Mary.
And I'll talk to Mary in advance, too.